Okay, welcome. I'd like to call this August 27, 2018 council meeting in order. We're back from break and if you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I may have to start pushing the chair in front of you.
Smartass.
Did you drink my water?
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Heffinger.
Here.
Lamb.
Here.
Parnell Kaybee.
Here.
Rose.
Here.
Shields.
Here.
Simpson.
Here.
Coyne.
Here. Reading the minutes?
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields.
I move that the minutes of the regular meeting of July 9, 2018, as prepared and submitted by the clerk be approved.
Second.
Discussion on the minutes? Will the clerk please call the roll and the approval of the minutes?
Lamb.
Yes.
Parnell Kaybee.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coyne.
Yes.
Heffinger.
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
Reports of standing committees, the Finance Committee met prior to council this evening and discussed nineteen different items, so the next council meeting will be a long one. We'll meet again prior to the next council meeting. Health, Safety and Sanitation Committee, Mr. Simpson.
Nothing to report at this time.
Thank you. Public Properties Committee, Mr. Shields.
Thank you, Mr. President. No meeting scheduled and no report this evening.
Special Legislation Committee, Mr. Lamb.
Thank you, Mr. President. Nothing to report, but I do have a meeting scheduled for October 17th, right Kathy?
Yes.
For when we begin a discussion about the equality legislation.
Seven PM.
Right? Seven o'clock?
Thank you. Streets and Sidewalks Committee, Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Nothing, no meeting scheduled, nothing to report, except I'm going to relinquish my chair position and at our next Streets and Sidewalk meeting it will be decided upon Eric Wendell's schedule it and he will chair that meeting and I will graciously still be on the committee, I hope, unless you change your mind.
Thank you. I think at the next council meeting we'll go ahead and confirm that council appointment.
Thank you.
Thank you. Water Utilities Committee, Mrs. Parnell Kaybee.
Thank you, Mr. President. No meeting scheduled, nothing to report.
Thank you. And Emerging Technologies Committee, Mr. Rose.
Thank you, Mr. President. Nothing to report, but we do have a meeting scheduled for the 19th of September at 5:30 PM here in the City Hall.
Thank you. Requests for council action, we have several for finance. We have 18-140 budget amendments, 18-141 accept donation from Target Corp. for the police, 18-142 accept donation from Stevenson Foundation for the parks, 18-143 resolution supporting state bike route 71, 18-144 expenditure of fifteen thousand for First Energy Ohio Edison Street Department, 18-145 amending section 91704 water rates, 18-146 increase expenditure for cozing for the street department, 18-147 increase the expenditure for Lake County sewer for the street department, 18-148 approve water connection for 5312 Lake Road in Lafayette Township, 18-149 2018 city auction, 18-150 transfer point two five seven six acres on Liberty Street to the CIC, 18-151 ODOT traffic signal maintenance agreements, 18-152 grant application for the Ohio Public Works Commission, 18-153 approve criteria for developer for the City Hall parking structure, 18-154 amending SPD one design guidelines and conceptual development plan, 18-155 application to establish revitalization district in downtown Medina, and finally 18-156 resolution urging Governor Kasich to invest budget surplus in local governments.
Reports of municipal officers. Mayor Hamel.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to welcome the council back after your summer break. August 31st on our public square, the Medina County Clerk of Courts and Love Incorporated are going to have their annual senior walk and it's from 10:00 AM to about 12:30 in the afternoon. Shakespeare on the square, Shakespeare in the square is August 30th and 31st as well as September 1st and 2nd. Each of those days it'll be from 5:00 PM to 10:30 PM on the square. The bicentennial community events, September 6th through 8th, our spirits of the past at 7:30 PM each day, and then September 30th at 1:00 PM at the Medina High School Middle Stage is a history of Medina schools and students presented by Roger Smalley and Gloria Brown. For additional bicentennial upcoming events, you can go to their website, www.madina200.com. Also on our square, September 9th is going to be the Tunnel to the Towers Race. That runs from about 7:00 AM to 11:00 AM. And new this year is a Never Forget 9/11/01, which is a remembrance ceremony at the new 911 memorial at our Medina Fire Station Number One. That'll be at 10:03 AM and it's put on by the local Veterans Association, the Rotary Club that built the memorial and the city. And last but not least, I'd like to invite to the front to join Council President and I Dustin Russell, who is the Regional Liaison for Governor John Kasich.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, Mr. President, ladies and gentlemen of the City Council, citizens of the City of Medina. It is a high privilege and distinct honor to be here to present to the mayor and to the President of Council this proclamation commemorating the bicentennial of the City of Medina. I recently had an opportunity to read a little bit about the history of your town and this area as originally settled by the Connecticut Western Reserve 200 years ago, this November as a matter of fact, date specific, and the resilient spirit of the citizens of this wonderful town in occurring several fires that literally destroyed the business district and the spirit of the members of this community not to say, "Well, forget it. We probably should find somewhere else," but they stayed and they lobbied the City Council and $3,000 worth of bonds were issued for public safety and fire and as a result of that commitment, you have a wonderful and outstanding city square here in Medina in a historic area as well. So on behalf of the Governor of the State of Ohio, present to you this proclamation commemorating your bicentennial and the great and rich history here in Medina, Ohio, a community that I have had the privilege to work for several people that have represented you in the Ohio General Assembly and now on behalf of the Governor. Congratulations.
Tell the Governor thanks also. Mr. Durham, Director Finance.
Thank you, Mr. President. As you well know, we have general fund budgets that we're ready to start on. For people watching at home, the city does a five-year budgeting process where we budget, we're currently working on budgets for 2019 through 2023 and we've done the first two sets. This is the third group, which is general fund. Those were all submitted to me by the department heads and I submitted those to council last week so that we can get going on that last section.
Yes, we're looking forward to completing our budget process. Mr. Hoover, City Law Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report.
Thank you. Chief Kinney, Police Department.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have several items here. On August 7th, a couple of weeks ago, we had our first National Night Out event. This event was hosted by Target in their parking lot. Several hundred participants from the community came out and got to meet police officers, look at the equipment that we have, the fire trucks, the police vehicles. We had K-9 demonstrations, Bike Patrol demonstrations, Medina Township Police, Montville Township Police came in together with us. We collaboratively hosted this event with those departments. Medina Fire Department, LST, Ohio State Patrol, and the Medina Park Rangers also participated in this event. Our civil service testing process is complete for the two officers, the vacancies that we have for those two officers. We will begin interview processes here shortly for those two openings and potentially for the extra two openings for Lafayette Township. Speaking of that, that contract for policing services starts September 1st, so this weekend that will begin. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Marshall, Economic Development Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report this evening.
Thank you. Mr. Mendel, Planning and Community Development Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report this evening.
Thank you. Chief Painter, Fire Chief.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report.
Thank you, Mr. Wright, Recreation Center Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. Of course, I always have a report. Just some quick updates from the Medina Rec. I want to thank the community first for another great season and all their support of the Memorial Outdoor Pool this summer. Sadly, we will be closing it on Tuesday, September 4th. The pool hours are now Monday through Friday, 4:00 PM to 7:00 PM. Saturday and Sunday and Labor Day, which will be the last day we're open, will be regular hours, 11:00 AM to 7:00 PM. The Medina Rec Center summer hours will be ending and we'll be back to the regular facility hours starting Tuesday, September 4th. I want to thank the school's maintenance, custodial, and rec center staff for another very productive shutdown week, the week of July 30th through August 3rd. There were over $192,000 in repairs and improvements made at the facility during that time period and countless hours of work performed in the building and on the equipment. This also included help from the city street departments and the fire department, so thank you. And yeah, so thanks to everybody again, for everybody assisting in another very successful team effort. The last two items I have is the new fall brochure is now available on our website and hard copies are at the facility and our next scheduled rec advisory board meeting will be Thursday, September 20th at 7:30 AM. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Woodley Parks and Recreation Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just two things to note. As of today, we recently installed three new bike racks in the district downtown, made possible in part by the Cleveland Clinic Medina Hospital, the Medina Hospital medical staff, the Medina Bicentennial Community, Main Street Medina, and the City of Medina. Those were installed throughout the district to help facilitate the events uptown specifically for cyclists. Secondly, the splash pads at Ray Meller Park and Greenwood Park will be closing after Labor Day. That'll be Tuesday, September 4th, they will be closed. The splash pad at Fred Greenwood will reopen on Sunday, September 9th from 11:00 AM to 3:00 PM for a pups at the splash pad sponsored by the Medina County SPCA. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gladys, Building Official.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report.
Thank you, Mr. Patton, City Engineer.
Thank you, Mr. President. Some updates on our active construction projects. The Guilford Boulevard Bridge, we were able to open one lane of that over the bridge last Tuesday, August 21st. This Friday, August 31st, mid-morning, we'll be closing it to install the two lanes of concrete pavement. It will be closed through the Labor Day weekend. We will open it early Tuesday mornings, September 4th. That should be the last interruption for this project. East Smith, the block between Court Street and Broadway, we anticipate that opening to traffic by the end of next week. I would remind folks, once Guilford is open and that block of East Smith is open, then we jump over and we'll be doing the other block of East Smith between Broadway and Jefferson. And last, the US 42, the asphalt pavers will be moving into town this week to finish the last of the asphalt pavement placement. We anticipate the both sides of 42 to actually be open to traffic within the next four to six weeks as that project winds down. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCulley, Service Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. I know it's a little too soon to be talking about winter salt. We did receive the state salt bids. Contract bid award has been awarded to Morton Salt Company and this year's amount is $55.43 per ton. A little disappointed comparatively, last season it was $31.18, so it's an increase of $24.25 per ton, but we'll just have to work through it. Thank you.
Thank you. Confirmation of the mayor's appointments. If there's no objection, I'd like to do all three appointments at the same time. Hearing no objections, the mayor's appointments are as follows. Medina County Citizens Advisory Council on Aging, Sue Boggs for a term expiring 8/27/21. Medina County Planning Commission, Eric Heffinger for a term expiring 12/31/19, and the Board of Zoning Appeals as an alternate number two, Eric Schultz for a term expiring 12/31/19. Move to confirm the mayor's appointments?
Second.
Is there any discussion on the mayor's appointments? Will the clerk please call the roll on the mayor's appointments?
Parnell Kaybee.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coyne.
Yes.
Heffinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Notices, communications, petitions, there are none, unfinished business, we have none. Introduction of visitors. Members of the public will be permitted the opportunity to speak on any issue or concern which pertains to the city during the portion of the council agenda devoted to introduction of visitors. All comments shall be directed to the Chair and a reasonable timeline of approximately five minutes will be imposed. If there is a group, please appoint a spokesperson. Speakers should approach the front right microphone and state their name and address so it can be entered into the minutes. Members of the public will be afforded the opportunity to comment on other portions of the meeting as determined by the Chair or by a vote of the majority of council members present. Is there anybody that wishes to address council at this time? Yes, sir.
Name and address.
My name is Doug LeBlanc, 159 year old, sitting in the back. Hello, we're going to talk about history tonight, the proclamation from the governor, and that's going to be the subject of my talk tonight, history. My family has been in Medina for a long time. I've got a baptismal record from 1838 from the congregational church up on the square. My great-great-grandparents were the Chittisters. They owned the Chittister House, which was a stagecoach stop on the south side of the square. It's now occupied by the Leach Building. My great-great-grandfather, Sammy McClure, was the prosecutor in the Captain Streeter murder trial, which resulted in the only execution in the City of Medina. Oh, I should say village in those days. One of his sons, Alex, owned an apple orchard on the side of Hawkins Market. He also owned a blacksmith shop and later owned a grocery, which later went on to become Rickards, and it's now the Honeybee Bakery. And remember Uncle Alex, because we're going to get back to him in just a little bit. My grandfather was a judge, a county's court judge, who presided in a trial in the murder of a local law enforcement officer. He was one of the founders of the Historical Society and the local check red cross chapter. Another relative of mine, Charles Boswick, has the dubious honor of owning a barn that caught fire and burned down the square. You can go ahead and laugh. My father, whose picture is up there, a third from the left, was the first mayor after the Village of Medina became a city and went into charge of former government. Now, I know what you're all asking, Doug, that's really interesting, but where are we going with this? Okay? Because my family was so involved in the history of Medina, I have a love for history and especially Medina. I studied in elementary school through college and it was one of my best subjects. Now, I mentioned my great uncle Alex. He owned a blacksmith shop on East Smith Road, about where the Getco Station is. He sold it to a gentleman by the name of Jabe Holman. Mr. Holman built five houses near the intersection of South Broadway and East Lafayette Road. He placed a horseshoe in the sidewalk near one of those houses and in another across the street from the blacksmith shop. Now, apparently, when the gas company was doing emergency repairs, this was removed, went, disappeared. Didn't find out about that till a week or so ago. And some residents contacted Mr. Patton and through his efforts, I understand the horseshoe was retrieved. Okay, good. I'm glad to hear that. But there have been other artifacts and relics from the history of Medina that have been uncovered, namely the ties from the southwest interurban on North Court Street and bricks from the foundation of the American Hotel. And were not for concerned residents, these relics may have been lost. I understand there is a Historical Artifacts Commission that is charged with retrieving and preserving items such as these. Where were they? I understand they're not active due to lack of participation and need, and I disagree with the lack of need. Now, I understand Roger Smalley is a member of this commission, and I know Roger's been busy this summer with the bicentennial, so I gotta cut him some slack there. The city touts itself as the historic City of Medina. It touts itself being historic, but you don't preserve the history. So if you need help, I hereby volunteer for this commission. Give me a fedora, a leather jacket, and a bowie, and I'll be the Indiana Jones for the city. With that, thank you and good night.
Thank you. Thank you for your information. Is there anybody else that wishes to address council at this time? Yes, ma'am.
Mr. President, members of City Council. My name is Amy Barnes. I live in the historic H.G. Blake House at the corner of South Jefferson and East Washington Street in Medina, specifically 314 East Washington Street. Welcome back from your break. I hope you were able to recharge and relax and ready yourselves for the coming months in your work as council members. Excuse me. I apologize for the necessity of my being here, but I was no longer given a choice since I have tried other avenues over the years that for whatever reason have not resulted in success. And recently, I was dragged back into this issue. It has actually renewed my hope that improvement this time will be made. I have studied the corner of South Jefferson and East Washington for more than 20 years. I have counted cars, studied traffic patterns, recorded vehicles running the stop signs, and helped schoolchildren across the street. Every step of the way, my interest has been the safety and the traffic flow of this corner, which once was the number one rated intersection for accidents in the public square area. Recently, I was notified by a city official that there had been a complaint by a pedestrian about the trees and bushes along the sidewalk on Jefferson Street and they needed to be cleared. I could understand that. I had no argument. And as soon as I was able to, I did the trimming to comply with the long list of requirements set forth in the city ordinance. After an inspection by what was now two city officials, the issue changed from concern about the pedestrian complaint to one of sightlines for cars on Jefferson. Again, I understood. I was told that the thought was that if trees were cut down, making for a clearer view from Jefferson across my property and onto Washington, then drivers would be willing to stop at the stop line on the northbound side of Jefferson. I told the city official that I would comply, but that cutting down my corner would make no difference to where the drivers stop. Because the simple truth is, it has nothing to do with the sightlines. It is a much more complex issue at this corner. The location of the current stop line on Jefferson is a leftover from the only time that corner was safe and worked correctly, except for the bad timing of the light, which needed tweaking. Rather than improve the light's timing, it was changed to a flashing red light and the stop lines on Washington were moved up to within a few feet of the intersection, making it once again extremely difficult for trucks to turn. The solution that was given me was maybe the city should buy my corner. I was not willing to do that. Because of the cars that illegally park on Jefferson for the bar and restaurant located there, traffic gets blocked and when a car is stopped at the actual stop line on Jefferson, it is impossible for the traffic on Washington to be able to tell if the car is parked or a part of moving traffic. Today, with my corner now cleared, I conducted a vehicle count. It should be noted that I stood out of the sightline as determined by the city, so I did not interfere with the driver's sightline or the flow of traffic. Between 3:50 PM and 4:50 PM, 79 cars traveled on Jefferson north toward Washington Street. Of those 79, only 14 stopped at the stop line and five of those did a second stop up at the edge of the intersection. That means of those 79 cars, 63 zoomed right through, stopped at a car length or more past the stop line. While I truly believe that the two city officials had the very best interest of the city at heart, obviously clearing my corner was not the answer. The solution to this problem dovetails with the ordinance passed at the last council meeting, making it so the mayor can accept bids for a company to paint stop lines around the city. Which brings us to tonight. I am hoping, really hoping, the city is planning these changes to fix the traffic situation at the corner of East Washington and South Jefferson that do not involve buying part of my historic property and turning it into more traffic lanes. The first suggestion would be to make the traffic light an actual traffic light like it was previously and as the study the city paid for showed was needed. Then, moving the stop line on the westbound lane of East Washington back to the cigar store. It used to be there. No other stop line needs to be changed. This makes it so the trucks have the needed room to turn. Then, make it no turn on red from Jefferson onto Washington, so cars will have no incentive to be past the stop line and on the edge of Washington. It probably would be helpful to install stop here signs at the stop line, so people realize those are the stop lines. They may not understand at first, but once they are there and a truck turns, they will. They did a couple of times today. That is all that is needed to fix this corner. The library can continue to have their part of the intersection out of compliance with its brick wall and large bushes, including the rose bush that grows 16 inches over the sidewalk. The trucks can turn safely and the cars on Jefferson won't have to pull up to the edge of the intersection to be noticed. As I've done many times in the past and not been taken up on this offer, I invite any interested officials to visit this corner with me. And because until you physically watch how the traffic flows, the full scope of the problem won't be understood. Thank you, Amy Barnes.
Thank you, Amy. I'm sure the administration, Mr. Patton's office will take that under consideration. Is there anybody else that wishes to address council? Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mr. President, Mr. Mayor, members of council. My name is Don Williams. I live at 160 Coons Avenue in the great city of Medina. My family doesn't have the kind of history Mr. McClure spoke of, and I have no complaints. My daddy moved me here in 1956 when I was but a wee lad. I'm glad he did. I love this town. I left for many years, but I returned here to the center of the universe 15 years or so ago. I have no real complaints, but I would like to build, actually it turns out, on what Mr. McClure had to say earlier about what may seem like a frivolous item. Patrick Patton's heard about it a few times, I understand, in the past few days, because it just came to the attention of social media and an active group known as Roadside History of Medina that watches and bulldogs things like this, and I kind of volunteered to be here this evening and speak about it. The horseshoe that Mr. McClure spoke of is a tangible and real piece of living Medina history. For more than a century, people have walked over the sidewalk and wondered what that elephant-sized giant horseshoe was about. And it's gone, and happily it's now found and back in Mr. Patton's possession, I understand, or under his control at any rate. The sidewalk is about to be poured there and this group that I speak of, I'll call them concerned citizens, would urge council to cause that horseshoe not to disappear into a museum, but to be reinstalled at the location that's occupied for 130 years, most of our 200-year history, so that another century of students from Garfield could walk across it and wonder what it meant. I've heard some great urban legends through the years at my time in Medina that I won't go into, but why put it in a museum? If the clock on Court Street in the square had to be moved to repair that sidewalk, I'm pretty sure you would put the clock back when the sidewalk was fixed. If Cooley Fountain had to be moved to repair a sidewalk, I'm pretty sure you would put the fountain back when that repair was complete. I urge council to put this horseshoe back in its rightful place on the sidewalk on the north side of Smith Road when that sidewalk gets poured, probably this week, or perhaps go back in after the fact and place it there. No memorial, no sign, no explanation, just a simple giant horseshoe that's been in the sidewalk for 130 years, representing the blacksmith shop, long gone now. And also bearing in mind that it's not a single item, it's one of two horseshoes that tells a story about the actual resident of that blacksmith's house and his work in a time long gone and something that would be ashamed to disappear from our history into the future in a back room. We would like to see it continue to occupy its rightful place after that repair is made. Other than that, I'm a very happy city resident and thank you for your service.
Thank you. Before I have Mr. Patton address that issue, I want Eric Heffinger, because I think you may be surprised that there are three horseshoes.
north side of Smith Road when that sidewalk gets poured, probably this week, or perhaps go back in after the fact and place it there. No memorial, no sign, no explanation, just a simple giant horseshoe that's been in the sidewalk for a hundred and thirty years, representing the blacksmith shop, long gone now. And also bearing in mind that it's not a single item, it's one of two horseshoes that tells a story about the actual resident of that blacksmith's house and his work in a time long gone, and something that would be ashamed to disappear from our history into the future in a back room. We would like to see it continue to occupy its rightful place after that repair is made. Other than that, I'm a very happy city resident, and thank you for your service.
Thank you. Before I have Mr. Patton address that issue, I want Eric Heffinger, because I think you may be surprised that there are three horseshoes. So, Eric?
I live at 551 Wadsworth Road, and I was told when I bought the house that it's the old sheriff's house, and I have one of those horseshoes imprinted on my sidewalk going to my side door. You cannot see it from the road, you have to walk up into my yard, but it is by my side door there. Yep.
If I could address that, I'm not exactly sure where 551 is, but I mentioned Mr. Holman built five houses. The first three houses, I'm sorry, it starts with the second house, third and fourth house on Broadway, and two on Wadsworth Road. So, that may be one of Mr. Holman's houses, and I know Bob Hyde's here. Would that be one of his?
The first two on Wadsworth Road and the first three on South Broadway were built by J. Holman.
So, it could very well be one of Mr. Holman's.
And they were built between 1908 and 1914.
Well, just for a little history, there are three horseshoes. I thought that was kind of interesting when Eric brought that up, that none of the horseshoes existed. But, Mr. Patton, if you could explain what's going to happen with the horseshoe. And do you have the horseshoe with you today, or is it in your office?
I have it in my office. Everyone's welcome to take a look at it. It's giant, it's really big. We did have been talking about what to do, what proper to do, one of the, there's a lot of different options, and everyone seems to have their own opinion, whether it should go to the museum, maybe go to the Historic Society, or maybe put it back in the sidewalk. And after kicking around and discussing it, the mayor and Mr. Coyne and the other folks on Board of Control, one of the ideas that seemed to take root was that we would put it back at that location, but not directly in the sidewalk, more on a pad abutting the sidewalk, maybe eighteen-inch by eighteen-inch concrete pad next to the sidewalk by the apron. The idea is we didn't want it in the walking area. This, it's going to be, the new sidewalk is going to be an eight-foot path, actually, for pedestrians and bicyclists, and that kind of thing is going to be part of a longer pad. So, we didn't want the horseshoe at that spot, within that sidewalk area, that path area, but that would be nice to still be there. We thought that maybe would be an option that kind of addressed everyone's interests.
So, yes, the reason that it can't be put directly in the eight-foot sidewalk area is now it's going to be able to be plowed, and we didn't think it would be a great idea to have something that could heave up, and then the plow hit it and rip it up, and that wouldn't be the greatest thing. So, I think the conclusion was put it near it, right next to it where it was, in its own little concrete area, so that at least it's visible, and people can see it and enjoy it if they want to look at it. So, I applaud that. And I don't know, Nino, if you have it or Pat, if you can get it, just so everybody can see the horseshoe that we've been talking about. I know that it's around here, I don't know if it's in a safe or what we did with it, but yeah, if you wanted to show everybody, so everybody can see it. I think it's, I think it'd be, wouldn't everybody like to see that horseshoe? I think everybody'd like to see it.
I saw it.
So, that would be good. Is there anybody else that wishes to address council at this time? Yes, sir.
I think everybody knows me, but I'm Bob Hyde, 330 Woodland Drive. One thing I wanted to mention, an artifact. When I did the history, I found out there were a hundred and eighty-six dwellings or buildings that comprised the public square and one block in each direction, and today there are a hundred and thirty-two. That means we have lost fifty-four dwellings or buildings to parking lots. And I have been able, out of fifty-four, to only retrieve twenty pictures. So, there are thirty-four buildings in Medina around the public square and one block in each direction that does not exist except in my memory. And that's an artifact, and it's something that people don't even consider until that history is gone. And I just wanted to add that to what Doug said, and I got to tell you, with the ten thousand people that are on the two Facebooks, You're for Medina and Roadside History, we have a great bunch of young people that just love the history of Medina. So, we've got plenty of people to serve on this commission for as long as they can be, because I know some young people that respond to mine that are just in their thirties now, and they have taken such a great interest in the history that we're giving Medina that we can go on forever and ever. So, if there's people on this commission that don't want to be on there, then we've got an awful lot of people that are willing to volunteer, not only Doug, myself, Deborah Halleck, so many of us. We're glad to do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Patton, I think here's the horseshoe that everybody's been talking about, and after the meeting, you could take photos with it, because I know that's the Facebook page, you know, had it on there, so you could take your photo with it, so you can show people that you actually were here with the horseshoe, so that'd be a good thing.
Pat's not happy he's got to hold the horseshoe.
Yeah, Patrick's got to hold the horseshoe. There you are, man.
He's going to hate that.
So, that's great. We appreciate it.
It's going to be on the front page.
Okay, is there anybody else that wishes to address council at this time? Anybody else that wishes to address council at this time?
Mr. President.
Mr. Simpson?
I would just like to take this time and thank everybody that wants to be on the Archives Commission. I think that's a great idea. But I also just want to comment that I think Mr. Smalley, not only with the bicentennial, has done a phenomenal job over the years with everything that, I mean, he's, for me, Mr. Hyde and Mr. Smalley, along with some other people, are Mr. Medina, so Roger, hats off to you. Thank you, Doug.
Thank you. Thank you. Anything, anybody else wishes to address council?
Okay, introduction and consideration of ordinances and resolutions. We have ordinance 116-18, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of two 2019 Ford All-Wheel Drive Police Interceptor Explorers from Lebanon Ford for the Police Department.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields?
The emergency clause has been requested. I move that it be added at this time.
My second includes the emergency clause.
Discussion on the emergency clause and the ordinance. Chief Kenny?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is our yearly rotation of vehicles. It is budgeted. These are two Explorers under the state bid. They're 2019s. The reason for the emergency clause is Ford is stopping orders for the 2019s in mid-September, and they're only accepting orders for 2020 Ford Explorers. There's one offering from this point on for police vehicles from Ford, and it is a hybrid SUV, which comes at a significant increase in cost. So, we're requesting the emergency clause so that we can get these next two as 2019s as quickly as we can.
Thank you. Any further discussion or comment? Clerk, please call the role in the adoption of the ordinance.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Heffinger?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Parnell KB?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Motion passes seven-zero.
Clerk, please call the role in adoption of the ordinance.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Heffinger?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Parnell KB?
Yes.
Ordinance 116-18 passes seven-zero.
Ordinance 117-18, ordinance authorizing expenditure to haul Public Safety Co. for the upfitting of two 2019 police interceptors for the Police Department.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Chief Kenny?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is for the upfitting of the two new SUV police vehicles. It's taking the equipment out of the old vehicles, putting it into the new vehicles, and any other associated equipment that needs purchase.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the ordinance? Clerk, please call the role in the adoption of the ordinance.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Heffinger?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Parnell KB?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Ordinance 117-18 passes seven-zero.
Ordinance 118-18, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to accept one easement at 247 East Smith Road necessary for the East Smith Road reconstruction project.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Mr. Patton?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is for the East Smith Road project at the corner of Smith and Jefferson. We needed to acquire an easement because we are widening the curb turning radius at that corner. The property owner granted us that easement. This is asking for council's acceptance.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the ordinance? Clerk, please call the role in the adoption of the ordinance.
Coyne?
Yes.
Heffinger?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Parnell KB?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Heffinger?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Parnell KB?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Heffinger?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Parnell KB?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Ordinance 117-18 passes seven-zero.
Ordinance 118-18, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to accept one easement at 247 East Smith Road necessary for the East Smith Road reconstruction project.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Mr. Patton?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is for the East Smith Road project at the corner of Smith and Jefferson. We needed to acquire an easement because we are widening the curb turning radius at that corner. The property owner granted us that easement. This is asking for council's acceptance.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the ordinance and the emergency clause? Clerk, please call the role in the adoption of the ordinance.
Coyne?
Yes.
Heffinger?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Parnell KB?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Heffinger?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Parnell KB?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Heffinger?
Yes.
Motion passes seven-zero.
Clerk, please call the role in the adoption of the ordinance.
Heffinger?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Parnell KB?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Ordinance 119-18 passes seven-zero.
Ordinance 120-18, ordinance amending ordinance number 177-17, passed December 11, 2017, amendments to the 2018 budget.
Move to approve. Discussion? Discussion, Mr. Durham?
Thank you, Mr. President. The, there are a number of amendments to the budget. Most of them are transfers from one line to another. The rest are, there's an increase in appropriations for the high grass program, an increase for the Parks Mountain Bike Bridge and Trail, and then there are some donations. And to explain to people at home, when we receive money as a city from some outside source, we have to still have council's authorization to be able to spend it, so we are grateful for donations from Ms. Malley's, from the Bicentennial Committee, and from Target, and then from the Stevenson Foundation.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Clerk, please call the role in the adoption of the ordinance.
Parnell KB?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Heffinger?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Ordinance 120-18 passes seven-zero.
There's a request to add ordinance number 121-18.
I'll make a motion to add ordinance 121-18 to tonight's agenda.
Second.
Discussion on adding ordinance 121-18? Clerk, please call the role in adding ordinance 121-18.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Heffinger?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Parnell KB?
Yes.
Motion passes seven-zero.
Ordinance 121-18 is an ordinance declaring that the city of Medina will provide municipal services to 31.9424 acres of land known as permanent parcel numbers 02010B, 0508, and 02010B, 0503, located in Lafayette Township, Medina County, State of Ohio.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion?
Mr. President?
Mr. Shields?
The emergency clause has been requested. I move to add it at this time.
My second includes the emergency clause.
Discussion on the emergency clause and the ordinance. Mr. Huber?
Thank you, Mr. President. This property is located at the intersection of Lake Road and Smith Road. Typically been referred to as the Ray property. The property owner there is building a large manufacturing facility. They've asked to be annexed through a dual jurisdiction annexation procedure. The, I think the city of Medina receives income tax, and Lafayette Township receives the remaining taxes. The requirement in this annexation is that the city council agree to provide city services, which include police and fire, water, and sanitary sewer, and so this ordinance paves the way for that.
Thank you. It's my understanding that the type-two annexation is in with cooperation with Lafayette Township, and Lafayette Township is amenable to this, since they will be receiving the property taxes, as they still do currently.
That's right. This is an emergency, though, because we need to pass this within twenty days of the filing of the petition, and the petition has been filed with the county commissioners.
Thank you. Again, and this is not adversarial to Lafayette Township in that they'd like to see this development occur, because, of course, they get more property tax. So, is there any other discussion on the emergency clause and the ordinance? The clerk, please call the role in the emergency clause.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Heffinger?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Parnell KB?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Motion passes seven-zero.
Clerk, please call the role in the adoption of the ordinance.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Heffinger?
Yes.
Lamb?
Clerk, please call the role in the adoption of the ordinance.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Hefinger?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Parnell, Kaby?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Ordnance one twenty-one dash eighteen passes seven zero.
Council comments? Mr. Quinn? Mr. Simpson?
Again, I'd like to thank everyone that come tonight to support the horseshoe and, and the artifacts about Medina. I'd just like to quickly comment, some of the road projects that's been, been occurring the last several months in, in around the city of Medina, I don't follow social media too much, but when I have, especially recently when the schools opened, there was a lot of negative comments, and, and I understand people's frustration. I've received a few calls myself, and people were complaining about the, the delays in, in travel time, and, and the only answer I could come up with was, you know, leave a little bit earlier, which probably wasn't the correct answer. The only thing I want to say is that, that almost every department head has been involved in these projects, but the, the city engineer, the, the service department, they've went out of their way, and they still aren't going out of their way to accommodate these projects moving forward as, as quickly as possible. And, and the Guilford project, it's, even though it has not opened at, at before the start of the, the school, as, as we hoped, it is moving along, and, and once it is complete, it's, it's going to benefit all the residents that do travel that area, not only for convenience, but for safety also, that, that, that culvert needed to be replaced. The other thing I'd like to bring up is, you know, we lost a United States Senator, John McCain, last weekend, and, and, you know, I, I can't say anything more than it's been said on almost every, every social media and, and television network throughout the country. I was disheartened with the fact that the White House chose not to keep the flag at half-staff. And, and saying that, as I've said in the past, and, and I am, you know, I, I try not to use a soapbox too often, but, you know, there's, there's a lot of, whether you're Democrat, Republican, Independent, this is still our country, we love our country. Things have happened over the years, you know, since, since its inception, that, that we're not right, and we're wrong, and, and as history moves forward, we've tried to correct those wrongs. It's not a perfect place, and it will never be a perfect place, but the, the discord that is happening nationally now is, is something I've never seen in my lifetime, and it, and it does upset me. So I just want to leave you with the notion is, just be kind to one another, and that's, that's all I can say. Just be kind to each other and your neighbors, and, and to make this world a better place. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Any further, Mr. Hefinger?
Yes, I'm going to go jump back to the construction talk a little bit here. I live at the intersection where everyone gets stuck, so I understand very well how frustrating it's been for the city, but I do think what we've been doing is for the best, and I really want to thank the Medina Police Department for constantly being there during rush hour to keep that traffic moving, because it made a substantial difference when they were out there. So thank you. Also, I want to say, good luck to all the teachers and staff and students at Medina City Schools. As a teacher, I know that the beginning of the year is hectic, so good luck, everybody.
Thank you. Any further council comments?
Mr. President.
Mr. Rose?
Thank you. Recently, I've read some things on social media complaining about internet access, and I just went through my own quote hell unquote with Frontier here recently. What I'd like to do is ask those who've had some problems, and Reed, you have the, the graphic up, thank you, to, to email me at the address provided, the, the residence name, address, any ticket numbers that you've received from Frontier, the phone number associated with that internet access issue, and a brief description of the issue, and the length of time resolved. I'd like to compile all those and get those to Frontier, because it, it is a shame what they're doing to us. They, they left me in a, I'm, I'm a geek, I'll, I'll admit it. They left me seven days without internet access. That's, that's deplorable, okay? That's, that's unacceptable, so, please send them to me, email. Don't send them via social media, I won't pick them up. Don't call me, I won't pick them up. Email them to me, and then I'll get them over to Frontier and try to get them to a[1554.35]